Few more seconds.
You're live.
I'm live.
Yep, you're live.
All right, I just want to hit the record button. All right, we are good to go.
Right, great, so I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting into order. It is October 6th, it's Tuesday, 2020, and it's 7:00 PM. We are doing this meeting via Zoom remotely, and it is gonna be a city council workshop. We do have an action item, and then we'll go into the workshop. And with that, I would ask everyone to stand, and we've got a flag behind Kim. We'll say the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
Flag.
United States.
States, America. And two, three, which stands, one nation under God. In different vote. With liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you very much. And with that, we'll move right into action items. Grace, Eric, you're up.
Okay, well, Grace and I are both here tonight. What we have in front of you, Council, is a change order for the US2 Tressle HOV Lane Project. I think you're pretty familiar with what's going on down on 20th. Right down there by just east of Tressle Station, where the fire department there bought the lot. We have a Fox Creek. It's a storm line that comes over or underneath Highway 20, Highway 20, 20, 20th Street. And it looked, apparently, when we did the design, like it was in pretty decent shape. And we got into it down there, and it's an old CMP 24-inch pipe that is rusted out and kind of failing. So it makes sense to go ahead and replace that now. So we planned on setting the structure. Actually, when we recalc the design, it ended up requiring a 36-inch. So we're gonna be replacing that section of pipe with a 36-inch, setting two structures, and then carrying it down the curb line before it darts back out to the north, out into the wetland there. So it was an unforeseen change that we didn't know it needed to be replaced at the time. So we actually have a grant for this project, for the Tressle Project. And this would be eligible for reimbursement. So we're asking to approve the change tonight for that project.
Eric, I have a question. Does this also benefit what the food bank would be doing there as well?
Uh, yeah, probably could, because we could get it done now versus having to, you know, if they did build there and we had to do it later, we'd be tearing out, you know, all their frontage improvements to do it if we had to do it later. So it definitely would help the big picture, yes.
Hey, I'm all for this. I think doing it now versus tearing up a road that we're gonna get all done one shot. I think this is great. And just reading through it, I think this is a good thing. Look forward to moving forward.
I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the change order one, not to exceed the amount of $163,000, $163,100 and zero cents.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion on the motion?
Eric, I got one more question. Is there any, is that close to any of the sewer lines?
Pardon me, Jim?
Is it close to any of the sewer lines?
No.
Okay, that's all I need. Thanks.
The sewer line is actually in the eastbound lane, and the east side interceptor, the new sewer line is like close to 14 feet deep. This is relatively shallow, and it's in the, be the westbound curb line on the north side, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Here, no discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Right, most fantastic. Good job, Eric. Thank you for your work on that and Grace.
Mayor, just for the record, does that approve unanimously?
That was, I heard, I heard no nays.
Great, just making sure for the record.
Okay. All right, let's move to the workshop. And with that, we're gonna talk about the preliminary budget. And Barb and Josh, you are up.
Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and let Josh take the lead on this and go over the operating budget and some preliminary requests. Josh?
All right.
My chair, Kelly?
Um, can you share?
I think I can.
Yeah, yep, you're good.
Okay. Can everyone see that?
Yep.
Okay, so this is the start of the budget process. At the council retreat, we kind of talked about the preliminary estimated endings and kind of the base budget. And today is the first discussion talking about some of the staffing requests and item requests that were made. And we went through all those together with the mayor and a management team. And kind of took the items and ran it through a forecast and kind of determined what we think we can fund and what items we want to bring forward to you guys. And so I'm just gonna be discussing the first round of talks about the staffing that we were gonna ask for and the items. Just like what you guys saw at the retreat, these are similar staffing requests, but it's just been tailored back a little bit to align with funding. So before we get into that, I wanted to talk about budget priorities. It's the same priorities that we kind of listed at the retreat. I wanted to say that at the October 20th meeting, and I'll talk a little bit about the, at the end of the workshop here. But there's still some items after we go through some of these preliminary stuff we need to talk about. And so the October 20th workshop, we're gonna talk about some kind of long-term priorities, budget priorities that we need to kind of figure out before we get it nailed down. So we'll follow that up at the end of this meeting here. Well, to start this off, I said this kind of late, sorry, just a little bit of time to get this together. But what we have here is the list of all the staffing requests that were made. And a lot of these requests align with the staffing presentation that you guys saw at the retreat. And so we sat down, we looked at all the requests, and as much as we'd want to fund every single request, just looking at the forecast, it doesn't seem prudent to do it that way right now. So we sat down with the mayor and Jean and I, and talked to all the directors, and we kind of prioritized that list. And what you see here is the end result of that. Two, two things to note, the reclassification of the building code enforcement inspector. That should say no for now. That was supposed to be in combination with if we got a code enforcement inspector. And so since we're not preliminarily going forward with that, that should be a no. And also, after discussing a little bit with Barb, we took away two seasonal park workers because they were held, kind of eliminated for COVID. And so I'll need to add those back to seasonal park workers, and it's about 25,000. But besides those two things, what you see here is the blues are the yeses that we were gonna go forward with. And we did not start anything January 1st. We decided to postpone positions starting till 6:01 to see what the economy looks like, to see what economic development looks like, to try to help and in the long term. And we can, when we get to that point, we look at how we're doing. So there's not necessarily that we just hired this out of the gate. We would look at how we're looking before we look at hiring these. So I just go through them real quick. I'm not gonna go through all the no's, but the guesses were to that combination of having the AP clerk come over to finance full-time and hiring a deputy clerk admin assistant. Those were high priority. The reclass IT, IT director, the halftime HR technician, the four police officers, we tried to say yes to two, and we start, we stagger them and start them June and September. Reclassifying the, or no, that's a no, the reclassifying the planner to planning supervisor, and then the permit lead, the permit supervisor, those are all yeses. They don't have any impact to the budget. This public works supervisor streets was good to go, and the application analyst. Those last two are the only two positions that are January 1st. Application analyst, we deemed was the highest need. We have a lot of systems, JIS systems, Viewworks, Laserfish, a whole bunch of systems that we're buying. And we don't have the manpower to really get them implemented. So that was a high priority to the IT department and public works and the, as a whole for the city. And the last item there was the first talks about adding a deferred comp match program for nonrepresented. That is preliminarily is 1% for all non-yes. And then we would start at June 1st. That number would be if every budget in the whole city that we're not ready for to participate. And so most likely, not everyone would participate, but that's what we have in the budget for now. So that's kind of just a high level of all the position requests. I would ask if you have any other questions before I move on. Not as many requests as a normal. So I think most departments understand that it's pretty tight this year.
Can I make one comment, Josh? Regarding the patrol officers, I did want to clarify that the chief had clarified that that was not for annexation purposes, that that was his actual request. So I just wanted to note that it still says annexation, but that is not for annexation purposes.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so the next list of items here is just the item requests. And there wasn't a lot of item requests this year compared to prior years. So we said yes to all of them. The, the ones that roll forwards are typically just rolled forward, but me and Barbara trying to show those more to the council, so they could see things we didn't use in 2020, for whatever reason, and we're gonna roll them forward, and we're gonna look at doing those projects again next year. This is not all the roll forwards. We need to talk to all the department heads and get a list to make sure that there's things that they didn't do because of COVID or because we said, let's slow down, let's see what's happening. A lot of departments held things off. It didn't do it in 2020. So we'll, all the departments and get all the roll. You decide the roll forwards you have here. Some of the big ones I'm just gonna point out is like security cameras from, for the, the Beach North Cove and Phase 2 Frontier Heights. Well, that's a pretty high priority stuff. The evidence room alarm system for the police station and police tele, telestaff scheduling software. The tuition reimbursement program you see there was requested by the chief, but after discussion, we decided that we're gonna make that a citywide request, not just the police station, the police department, because anybody can do that program. So we want to put a little bit of money in the budget, just in case anyone wants to further their education. There can be a little bit of a payment from the city. Other than that, there's nothing too big here. That's, one is the beautification plan for Russ. And that, that's 90,000. But other than that, I think the list just speaks for itself unless anyone has any questions. Okay, so what I did here on this next slide was just to show like what the budget impact is. This is just requests. This is not any roll forward items. Way roll forward items work is be on the budget side, we just assume that's being spent so that it rolls into fund balance. And then at the end of the year, next year, determine was actually spent, and Barb will do a budget amendment. So roll forwards kind of take care of themselves. But the, this is the list of all of the budget requests by fund. So obviously, a lot less than the initial request. We tried to keep it pretty reasonable this year because there's a lot of uncertainties out there. But I just wanted to show what the impact is. And obviously, staffing requests will be in perpetuity. These would be ongoing out into the future.
Josh, could you, could you highlight the number funds as to what they are to remind us, the 101, the 410, the 510?
Sure. So 101 Street Fund, and so that request was the street supervisor. The 410 is the operating fund for Storm. So that was a partial of that personnel was the application analyst. And then the, the other 80,000, it says 410, but really that's capital Stormwater, and that's was, was a truck request. 510 is the IT replacement fund. 520 is the police replacement fund, and 530 is the public works replacement fund.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. So here is a base budget forecast and the preliminary budget forecast. I wanted to say a few things about the base budget, because I did make a few changes from the one at the retreat. Like I said, I probably would. The base budget, I increased the sales tax. Got the sales tax through September, and things are looking fine. So I went ahead and updated that and increased the forecast and the preliminary ending. Also had to do some changes to some staff allocation. Some positions were allocated wrong, and there was a position that was missing. So I had to update that. And then AWC came out with their benefit costs, actual benefit costs. So they were lower than anticipated. So the percentages went down in the forecast. So I just made those updates to the base budget. So at the bottom here is what the forecast looks like if we implemented all of the requests. Even starting in June, looking out into the future. The Taget brought a good point at last time. This doesn't include any development scenarios. So this is still pretty conservative. There's a lot of things on the horizon that we just don't really know yet. So this is just what it looks like now with the current requests now, and doesn't include any developments, scenarios, and then not, and no annexations. So that's the general fund. The, the next slide here is the street fund. So during that allocation, there was a position that was hitting the street fund that shouldn't have been. So their, their base budget changed a little bit. And the bottom is the preliminary budget. Besides the street fund requests, like the supervisor, one of the things they asked for was another 100,000 for payment preservation. And I went ahead and increased the payment preservation ask out into the future. I think that $400,000 a year is not enough. So I increased it to 500,000 a year. Now, we may not need that, and we might need to change that, but we have a lot of streets. I think 500,000 is a good amount. The other things we added a little bit here was for street logo signs. If you see, we've been putting a lot of nice signs out there. This is 20,000 or city logos, street signs. And there was a ask for 40,000 for some repair and maintenance, one time, catch up on some deferred maintenance. So that is all of the items, preliminary items requested for the street fund. And the last operating fund, meaning operating, meaning just funds that have people assigned to them, is the Stormwater Fund. This didn't change very much. So there's not a lot of Stormwater requests on the operating side. The biggest thing here was, even though the fund balance is going up, we're making a million-dollar transfer to capital each year. And so capital is kind of the next discussion, but we're still developing a capital plan for the Stormwater Fund. So very little change budget in the plan for the Stormwater Fund. Okay, well, that's pretty much all I had. We just wanted to kind of get our toes wet on the budget. Talk about some of the preliminary items that the department's requesting and what the mayor thinks is good to start discussing and bringing forward. So that's what this question is. Looking out into the future here, next week, I want to talk about capital funds and all the capital projects and all the roll forwards, all the projects we're doing this year and what's going forward. And also kind of just have the other funds, like Gary, finish up on the debt funds and the replacement funds and internal service funds and stuff like that to get, so you have all the funds, a big picture that we can start with to get finalized numbers for the proposed budget. So that would be the 13th meeting. After that, budget discussions on October 10th and maybe into 27th is what we need to talk about. Put this back. We need to talk about some big items. So we'll be discussing like what to do with the TBD, looking forward, funding the senior center, looking at the health district. And that, one of the things we need to talk about is property taxes. The property taxes are usually 1% a year, but sometimes the IPD, the, was it price deflator? How we determine how we're gonna do proper taxes. And this year, it ends up being less than 1%. So what that means is we can't levy our 1% without doing a substantial need. So the IPD this year is 0.6, so we can do 0.6. National need. And so those are the, some of the things we need to discuss at the October 20th meeting. And then after that, you get it, the November 1st is when we'll have the proposed budget. And then November 10th is the public hearings and property taxes and finalizing the budget. Well, that's kind of what we're looking out to in the future. One thing I was gonna say is, after the October 13th discussion, hopefully, we've got some of the numbers nailed down. And what I'm gonna do is put a binder together for everybody that has all the budget materials in it. And I want to try to have all that to all you guys by the 20th, October 20th. That seemed like you guys don't have as much as we normally meet in person. So I'll be printing out all the requests, all the budget information, and putting it together. So you guys. That's all I have.
Hey, Josh, I appreciate it. Hey, would you go back up to the personnel side?
I can't.
So I'd like to have some discussion on this slide from council members. I think where I was iffy and would love some input is that, that code enforcement inspector. And if we think that there's some value to add that in this next year. A dedicated code enforcement person to be taking care of some of the issues that we're running into around the city.
It doesn't take much driving around the city to, to see that that would be a good use of resources. And I know that having to do permits and stuff and do code enforcement, you know, makes it less effective, even on things that people that want to remedy situations. We're not addressing things in a timely manner. And so where people are, there's an adverse relationship with the person we're trying to remedy the problem with. It's gonna take even longer. It shouldn't take a year to come bring something to resolution.
But the question I had, what I was thinking was whether or not having that position puts undue burden on law enforcement. And given that we're not able to fully fund the law enforcement positions, would funding the code enforcement officer, in essence, at least relieve some of, you know, that, that other pressure on current law enforcement personnel?
Yeah, I think your answer is yes on that, Angie.
I, I guess I would point out that this position would not be in the police department. It would be through community development.
Correct. And I think that's where we would want it, so that we're doing more civil actions versus criminal actions.
Do we generate any fines through code enforcement?
We, we do recover some fines. Up to this point, we haven't used that as a consistent tool. Usually, we try to settle before recovery of fines. But if we looked at a different model, like we'll be talking about, probably in a month or so, there might be a hybrid where we could go to fines or tickets in a quicker, quicker manner.
I would support Councilmember Ewing's comments. We've had this issue before us on specific instances. And again, I guess I'll use the analogy of as we kind of grow our community from a more suburban slash urban area, I think it's going to be more important as we go forward to have this in place to rectify and solve some of the ongoing things that we have our, in our community. So I would, I would strongly support adding this. I think we've all seen instances in the past where you kind of shake your head at and say, why is that allowed to continue? And of course, certainly, the neighbors are mystified as to why we allow things to have, continue as well. So I think it would be a proactive solution to address some of our issues, and I, again, I would support this.
I would as well. And I'd had the same question Angie did, is would it overall help our workers in our city, our staff, to have that person doing that task rather than making it criminal, what's going on? I really, I think it's a great addition.
So I have a question also on this. I don't disagree with Angie or Mary on that. But what I, what I fear sometimes is that if we have a code enforcement from the community development that goes out to a belligerent person, and is there a way that we have that we could get a backup from a police officer in that case?
We definitely evaluate, evaluate each case. And if my staff currently feels that they're in danger going to a site, there is a police escort. And we look at the severity of the issue and any known history. So yes, we definitely rely on PD to back us up.
And then also, I want to reiterate a conversation we had not too long ago about some people having problems with code enforcement due to age or lack of funds or those kinds of things, and reaching out to some community people to help in those cases. We have quite a few different people out there that would go help those people with their code enforcement. I don't know how we would codify something like that, but I would like to have that somehow put into place where we're asking the right people to help when it's necessary. And I think that the code enforcement person would be a good person to be able to say, okay, I understand what's going on here. This person needs some help. We need to reach out.
And they can then reach out to Jill, who I think is overseeing the community improvement volunteer program that we were trying to establish. And I think it'd be great to have people that want to help in that way.
That'd be a great place to start, yeah.
Yeah, and they say, hey, we've got this person that's got some, you know, overgrown shrubs or whatever, you know, do you want to come help, help with this and help with it? I think we find people and to help with that.
Yep, great suggestion.
I'm all for that change as well. So just.
Now, I am too, in case I didn't make myself clear.
Russ, you indicated, I think in previous conversation, or maybe you just mentioned it, you're going to have some updated code language or proposal coming to planning commission and council here in the next month or two regarding code enforcement?
Yeah, that was a task we're working with our city attorney's office on. City attorney's been on some other city business recently, but that's still in the works. And the building official, I believe, has been having communication with one of Greg's staff on what an approach looks like. And so, yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, great discussion on that. I think it's, I think it's an important position, and it, I think it will advance the city in quite a, quite a few ways there. Any other discussion on the budget tonight?
Aside from what we just talked about on the staffing request, was there anything else that you were, or anybody in the staff was, the directors were wishy-washy about on the no's?
Um, I don't think that there was any other ones that I was wishy-washy about. I, when we looked at these, I wanted, I wanted to make sure we fulfilled the minimal needs that I think we have in the next year and going forward. And also balance that with just some of the unknowns of, of making sure that we have the, the right economic development tools in place within the next, that first six months. So, yeah.
And this may have been covered. I just, uh, wondering why the traffic officer looks like it's $204,000. So it looks, I don't see that it's two officer, that you see it as being one. Am I misreading that?
The first year, uh, some of the, all the equipment would be like a vehicle and all those costs would be for the first year. That, that's not the cost of the officer. In subsequent years, it would be the salary and benefits. But the, uh, first year would be the, basically to outfit the, the traffic officer.
Okay, hence the higher cost in year one, okay.
Yeah.
Do we have the same kind of, uh, costs rolled into the code enforcement inspector?
There wouldn't be upfront costs, yes.
So that's not just the person, but it's the vehicle that we might have to get for them, that person, et cetera.
That's what I had put into my request. I think that number looks a little low. That looks like a salary and benefit. That the vehicle would be probably about $30,000 then, a couple thousand dollars for phone, laptop and, and those type of items.
So we need to get that updated.
Yeah. I can go back and check. We'll see what that is.
I, I guess the only question I would have about any of the positions that are no would be the crime analyst. And I, I know that we have talked about, um, you know, the importance around community policing and how much of that is focused around, uh, analytics and, and good use of your data is, is there? Is there benefit considering potential annexations, uh, considering our population growth and looking at that position this year?
I'll adjust that Sean. We, we talked about that quite a bit with, with the chief. You know, we're at that, we're at that, um, position as a city where do we have enough work for a full-time crime analyst? Um, yeah, kind of, sort of. And, and so we, but we're looking into some other possibilities. Do we maybe share a crime analyst with another city? Do we look at, there's some other resources out there that we might be able to use to reach into on maybe a contract, um, basis? So we just, when we looked at it, we just weren't sure we were there to fully commit to a full FTE on that.
Okay.
And I would like to comment that the, um, the amount for the, uh, code enforcement inspector does include, uh, the vehicle, cell phone, um, a tablet, a computer and clothing. Um, the reason that the traffic officer is so much more than that is because it includes a vehicle and a motorcycle. And so, and all the clothing and everything. So the 133 500 is all inclusive for the code enforcement inspector.
Okay, thank you Barb.
So Mary, do you have a question or maybe chief, you could answer us? The crime analyst, I'm wondering what, what skill sets, um, that has that differentiates that person from, you know, patrol officer, detective, or, you know, any other kind of analyst?
Well, they, they would be specifically, uh, trained on looking at all the data points that we have. And trying to figure out how to answer the question, uh, in a good way. Getting information out of something is, is a very specialized skill. I mean, when officers or detectives are looking, they might run a name and get all the past history of that name. But when you start having to then write queries and write programs to look for commonalities between different people, different places, different times, that gets to be, that's a skill set in and of itself. And that's training very much in and of itself. So this person would be looking at a higher level, not just at one individual and running their name to see what kind of, you know, what their history is. But they'd be looking for trends. They'd be looking for commonalities, um, using all the different databases we have, which are really tremendous. And I, I know the, uh, the different reporting systems, the DAM reports that those folks use is a very complicated system. Because the information that you get out is very, very specific to what you're asking for. So it's very difficult to ask the correct question of the information. I, I, maybe I'm not explaining it as well as I could, but, um, I took a shot.
Yeah, that, Chief, you're spot on. And there's just some deeper diving systems that a crime analyst would be able to access than, than patrol or detectives. And it's also just the time to, to, to think that a patrol officer, we're going to let him spend four or five hours deep diving into some data. That's just not a good use of their time.
Oh, this person is not a commissioned officer, it's just a crime analyst?
Correct.
I actually didn't mean that to come out that way.
It did, Ken.
Just a crime analyst. I didn't mean it that way. I hate it when it reverberates back in your ear and you go, wow, that sounded terrible.
You know, one of the things that was an interesting look while we were looking at these positions was the traffic officer spot. And I'd asked the chief to do an analysis of if the traffic officer pays for themselves. And the numbers that came back is no, um, not, not really even close. And the, the biggest issue there is the costs of the court costs that we deal with with sending all of our stuff to Marysville. That's where we get, um, quite a bit of that money taken away in, in, uh, citation revenue.
So how would that be impacted if, um, with the proposal to, um, have that the, you know, our new complex? Um, having that court in-house instead of, uh, doing a third party?
Yeah, so we'd really have to look at what we're paying Marysville right now. And then can we, with that same money, uh, do court here in Lake Stevens, a, a day or two out of the week with a traveling, court clerk and a judge, right? That's shared between Sam and Roe and Sultan.
Well, I don't know, but for, for sure, because I don't know the data. But if you spend a little bit more time on Lake Drive, you'd probably get some more money.
Great. What other comments you have on the budget tonight? Okay, I am hearing no more comments on the budget tonight. Great job.
I got one.
Great job, Josh.
Uh, the forecasted ending balances charts that we have all the time, the doom and gloom chart, I call it. I appreciate these charts, but I also appreciate the fact that Josh pointed out that, hey, there's, there's an income that we know is coming, but we don't know what it is or when it is. So it's really hard to put in here and analyze. So I do appreciate the forecasted ending, but, and ending balance sheets that you put up here, knowing that we have, that it's not as bad as it really looks. We, we know it's going to be better than that.
Yes.
I appreciate the clear and concise presentation of data. Thanks both Josh and Barb.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Oh, I do have one more question. Josh, I, I think this might be for you. It could be for Barb. On the property tax levy, you said we're at point six. If we didn't do anything with that, doesn't that roll over?
If you, even if you want to, uh, bank it, you have to do a ordinance of substantial need.
So to bank, to bank it, we have to do the substantial need?
So what, how it works is we're limited to the IPD of point six this year. So if we do nothing, we can levy point six or we can bank point six. If you want to touch that other point four that's missing, you have to do an ordinance of substantial need to either bank that point four or use that point four.
Okay, I understand that might, yeah, okay. So the question that I had was a point six could be banked.
Yes.
No matter what, we don't have to do substantial needs for the point six.
We did not.
That's correct.
Yeah. If you did nothing and you banked it, we would, could only bank point six. If you did a substantial need, you could bank 1%.
Okay, great.
All right, great. Council president, Tessa, do you have anything?
I don't have anything else for the, go to the order.
All right then. With that in mind, I will adjourn for tonight. Appreciate everyone's work. Go out and do great things.
Thanks everybody.
Congratulations to the mayor on, uh, his new taxpayer.
I know. You gotta get him to work.
Bye.
Bye, everybody. Thanks, Josh.